Anexing by voluntary petition, certain real property approximately ten and eleven one hundreds acres in size, and generally located on the west side of Sangro Law Lane and approximately two hundred and twenty-seven feet north of Artesia Street, located contiguous to the city of La Vito in accordance with the voluntary annexation provisions of Section 171.044 Florida statutes. We define the boundaries of the city of La Vito to include said property, providing for findings, providing for conditions, directing the city clerk to record the ordinance with the clerk of the circuit court, with the chief administrative office of Seminole County, and with the Department of State, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for non-codification, and the taking of administrative actions, and providing for an effective date. And that's your ordinance by title, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Group.
Mr. Cott.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a voluntary annexation petition for approximately ten point one-one acres. Chapter 171 of Florida statutes spells out three criteria for a voluntary annexation. One, it must be contiguous to the corporate boundary of the municipality. Two, it must be reasonably compact. And three, the annexation cannot result in the creation of an enclave. This proposed annexation meets all three criteria of the state statute. Therefore, it is recommended that City Council conduct a public hearing and adopt ordinance number 1603.
Thank you, Mr. Cott. Is the applicant present? Well, why don't we do this? Since the next three or four items are relative to your project, if it is okay with the council, I think it would probably be best that we get the presentation now. Does that work for everybody?
Mm-hmm.
Why don't you do that now, and then we can recall you for questions, and I'm sure you'll... I know I have some written requests here, so there may be some rebuttal also.
Yes, sir. I'm going to start by introducing myself.
You take your time, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. First, I want to thank the neighbors who put their input over the course of our annexation that resulted in the plan. Pennyboard for exceptional staff. I'd like to introduce David Evans to you in a minute. One more thing is I wanted to just kind of explain that we are a tow playing company. We own a developed regional... We're a developer company and also a brokerage company. We own a developed regional impact over in Tampa called, called Woods, through the city, like the city. We converted years ago from industrial to residential during the recession. It was the only place we had found at the... A foresight, so it's been a long process, and we've been going through that. We also built in the back in the... Right before the recession came on us, we got out a long time at a time. The enclave at Lake Donut, we developed a part of it. We recently developed the curve, kind of the center construction right now, out of here. Similar size, we can improve what we're doing here, so that that's, you know, how. We also did Del Amaro, down in South Orlando, right at the intersection of the... Presently, another project in Orange County, far from here, almost at the county line of President's Park, which will be on Rouse Road.
Evening, sir.
Good evening. David Evans, Evans Engineering, 709 Earl Avenue, 4283.
Thank you.
Glad to be here. As you know, this is kind of the hole in the donut, the purpose of the annexation. It needs to be reincorporated into the city, and obviously making this a bit more correct. Wrapping them all up in one, because I don't like to talk about where the annexation process, honestly, comparing the land use on the neighboring properties as well as owning a little properties. This property will have the exact same land use, but it's what it is, just actually. It'll be its only designated, or one. Worked with city staff very well, actually presented a lot, a lotting plan, I think. But presented a lotting plan that actually shows twenty-three lots, I think, in your summaries. Each one of the three summaries you have had last five weeks, I had a homeowners meeting on October 13th, where we, the homeowners are kind of, surrounding homeowners are kind of talking about their individual needs, the infrastructure necessary to find a subdivision properly, and incorporate that into theirs. Placement of some of the many pieces and some of the pension funds, those things were really kind of based on our conversation with them. So, again, filling in the hole in the donut, so if this property comes into state.
Better. Thank you. I'll start over. No.
Can you start over, please?
Yeah, right. Somebody got it on tape. At the end of the day, making sure this property is consistent with the surrounding properties, and talking with each one of the individual homeowners, and making sure that they understand the way that we're proposing this development. One of the elements that has to be done, obviously, to make this thing... One of the elements that has to be done, obviously, to make this thing work is Shangri-La Lane. Currently, a dirt road will be paved to city standards, bringing that up to the project entrance and actually a little bit further. We'll have a beyond-city utility services, obviously access city roadways. Obviously, through the concurrency process, we'll perform a traffic study to study the different roadway networks and intersections as required, so that we are sure that the traffic flow will not affect or adversely affect any of the surrounding neighborhoods as well. Part of the project, obviously, backs up to properties on the south. Most of the home sizes and the surrounding properties will be consistent with these. There was some discussion about the homes that actually, the only two left that were over on the west side that would be backed up to McKinley's Mill. And there were some ideas on those to max, to cap the maximum square footage of those houses so that they wouldn't be adversely affect the neighbors on the other side. We're looking at some buffering and some landscaping on both the west side and the south side, and preserving of some of the natural vegetation that's there already. We've got the vid tree survey. We've worked with an arborist to make sure the trees will survive. And we'll come back to the city once we do the subdivision plan with those specific elements that have to do with how we're going to preserve some of those landscape buffers and other things. So at the end of the day, you know, the development will be consistent. Obviously, replanning some of the trees that we might have to move for roads and ponds. And then, obviously, tying into the existing properties on all four sides is our main concern.
So when you say those homes will be smaller footprints, you're considering only single-story homes there or?
Yeah.
We're considering single-story, but we would absolutely like to put on the record that we would cap the size of these houses to 3,500 square feet maximum, which you have a building envelope large enough on both of them that it could be single-story.
How about the homes on the south border?
They would be conventional. A lot of the things we did do.
Will they be two-story or one-story?
Yes, most likely they would be two-story.
Two-story.
Yeah, I mean, it just depends on what the demand is.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yes, sir.
I know you're planning on 23 homes on the nine acres. But I, when I was reading in the agenda, there's this one lot that you're going to keep for one acre that said might be a very large residential one.
There we go. What it is, is it's Betty Costner's home.
Okay.
And what happened was, is when we were designing this subdivision, we were brought up, a few points were brought up by the staff that we wanted to take care of. One was, they wanted a round, so that there would be a loop system for the community. And then they also wanted to see if we could fill in the hole of the donut and not have her outside the city and bring her in.
Okay.
So we went, approached her to purchase all of her property. She wouldn't sell all of it. She sold most of it. She will now be entering through the subdivision, so she'll be part of the community. She'll be part, she'll be a resident of the city now. There won't be a hole in the donut.
Right.
And it really, she'll be basically, it's an existing residence. It's part of the community. There's also a contractual agreement by her that she can not, she could not subdivide this without my permission. I will move that right, because it's assignable, I'll move that right to the homeowners association. So it'll be their decision if they want more than the one resident back here. And, you know, chances are that it'll always be.
I just thought that must want to be like the new mayor will mansion.
Well, we are building President's Park in Orange County, and we have the president there.
So is Shangri-La going to connect directly to Artesia, or is it going to go all the way through? Point to Shangri-La.
We only own to here.
Okay.
Or the city owns to here, and we own, we're going to give enough driveway in Betty's. If you can see the plan here, Betty Costner's property, we're going to donate this portion to the city.
Okay.
And then the private residents that owns back in here, the private contractor president who's been high-end, they chose to build those last five lots.
Okay.
All right, because that was originally designed to connect up to Hammock Reserve.
It was designed, yes, sir. Actually, cul-de-sac, shown on the original PSP.
In Hammock Reserve, you mean?
Yes.
Anybody have any other questions? Do you have anything else, first gentleman?
I have a question. Okay, I'm looking up there, and the area that's surrounded in a yellow line. You held up a map to show that. Is that where you're building, or are you building in the little black area?
The yellow line, the black area is Betty's. You're looking at.
Okay.
Yeah. Betty's is part of the annexation.
Gotcha, okay.
The annexation will be the whole property, including the black area.
Okay.
The comp plan is broke up into two different ordinances. One is the black area, one is the yellow area, and then the zoning is all the area again. Just like the annexation.
Okay.
Anything else, guys? Thank you, gentlemen. Probably call you back up in a little bit. All righty, this is a public hearing, as I announced earlier. I do have written requests to speak on this item. The first written request I have is from Mr. Michael Craig.
My name is Michael Craig, and my wife Kathy, and I live at 1030 Shangri-La Lane, and my mother-in-law lives at 1020 Shangri-La. You're here with us tonight. Most of y'all know a little bit about my history. Previous city employee and city council member. I'm not going to be a hypocrite. Came to Oviedo as part of the big development boom back in the eighties. And I handiwork and signature as probably owned about three, four of the developed lots in the city of Oviedo, either as engineer or somehow managing or working in the city when those properties were brought in. I'm not opposed to development. And I'm not anxious to be a hindrance to somebody doing a reasonable project. With this letter, I think I'm going to, because of my time limit, I'm going to skip down, just cover a couple of items that I've learned recently. Item seven states that the developer, Bill Sullivan, provided copies of the document labeled Hammock Park Density Study at the previous public hearing that appears to only include lands to the north and west for determining surrounding density. Properties to the south and east should also be included in this study. Placement of eight new lots smaller than a quarter acre adjacent to our home site appears to violate spirit and intent of requiring compatible density by a developer wishing to be annexed into our community. Now, I think I sort of heard the same thing said again, that it was compatible with the surrounding development. Fifty percent of their, roughly fifty percent of their property to the south and to the east, that does not, that doesn't jive. We have four acres immediately to the south, which includes our property and my mother-in-law's property. There's two homes there. We intend to live our lives out there, and we're not planning to develop it. A little history about how I came into that property was as a city employee and working with the developers for Bentley Woods, who was Centex Homes, and for McKinley's Mill, who was Kerry Reiki, and stumbled on this property. It was for sale, and I bought it. Talking to those developers, they had researched my property and other properties, which now include subject property tonight, and concluded that it was not viable to develop. It sits too low, requires substantial fill to develop it. And so I've always been on this property with the assumption that activity to our north on this property would at least be large-scale lots because of the nature, the natural conditions there with the high groundwater table and setting below. I did call Mr. Sullivan today to have kind of a final conversation before I came tonight. Not certain whether I would want to speak in opposition or possibly even in favor of this development. And if I can jump ahead to item 11. My conversation with Mr. Sullivan on this date to explore opportunity to include a minimum 10-foot dedicated landscape buffer easement along our common boundary and possibly win our support for the project resulted in no success. I understand that in addition, the substantial fill required to develop the site will be an eight-foot wide swell created along our common boundary. This will effectively wipe out the entire existing natural buffer now in that area. It is very discouraging to hear that it will take two feet to four feet to fill and develop the property. Our related to Mr. Sullivan, the reason that Centex Homes, developing Bentley Woods, and Mr. Kerry Reiki developing McKinley's Mill chose not to acquire the subject site was due to the limitations for development. This morning, I was starting, I was thinking, well, I'll talk to Mr. Sullivan if he can agree to some reasonable, I think 10 feet is very reasonable, landscape buffer. You know, we might even share and dedicate buffers off both sides of that property line and end up with preserving a lot of the vegetation and tree coverages there and now. My understanding from him is not out of any personal issue, but just because of the requirements to develop this property, they'd be able to fill two to four feet. He'll have to create a swell on that south boundary. And all my visions of a partial landscape buffer perpetually right there can't happen with the proposed density and lot sizes going in. The only solution I see to resolve that is to go back and revisit the product that they planned to put in and rework the geometry so that there is an opportunity to preserve some of the more country look of our side of the fence. And, you know, I hope he can get there. Otherwise, my comment to you guys, well, I've got a conclusion. I'll read it. It's bound on more than a conclusion. The proposed development will have a significant negative impact on our home site and the neighboring community. Development will require almost total denuding of the trees and vegetation. It will require substantial fill and grading of swells and ditches along the boundary, which will not be attractive for any of us or any prospective new residents. We strongly encourage City Council to reject the annexation and rezoning of the site as presented, and instead, the city should work with the developer to arrive at a lower-density development that allows for some preservation of the site with strong consideration of the impacts of any proposed development activity. I know we've heard the reference to filling in the donut hole, and I appreciate that. But I also appreciate the biggest impacts of any development are perimeter damages. And when you are the donut hole, you're coming in and asking to be annexed and asking to become part of a community, the impacts you have to the perimeter of your property are the most important. When Oviedo was primarily rural, and we developed Alafel Woods, Twin Rivers, Kingsbridge, those were farm sites. They weren't going in trying to make their site pleasing and attractive to an adjacent neighborhood. A cow doesn't care. We are a family, and we do care what our adjacent neighborhood looks like. We're very pleased to be beside the folks of McKinley's Mill and the folks of Bentley Woods. But to start over with a denuded site, major swells and drainage features would effectively wipe out all vegetation, is just not something I would like for the city to entertain. I'd like for you to work with the developer, figure out a plan that's workable for him. I had some conversation, I won't expand too much on that, but that piece of property that would connect Shangri-La Lane to the north that we talked about, it's recently come up for sale. That might help with his business plan to look at acquiring that and adding some additional land there. But I guess I've stated as best I can. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them.
Thank you. Thank you. Next request I have is from Mr. Eric Brinkman.
Mayor, council, how are you guys?
Great, how are you?
I brought my notes here. Sorry, I'm cheating. I apologize. First time. So, good evening. I'm Eric Brinkman, Newcastle Lane, Oviedo. I don't know if I have to put the address or not. I'm representing the McKinley's Mill neighbors and residents. So we understand this meeting is focused on annexation, clearly, but we are interested in what's happening around us, not just in McKinley's Mill, but the surrounding area. The developer has begun to work with us, and we plan to be present during the planning processes and meetings. We've discussed several concessions to date with the developer. Mr. Mayor and council, you know McKinley's Mill residents are usually pretty engaged and concerned about infill developments everywhere in the city, not just adjacent to McKinley's Mill. That said, we do support the annexation so long as the developer continues to work with us. And lastly, we respectfully ask for a natural barrier surrounding the perimeter of said properties. We thank you for your time and consideration on the impact of this project we'll make amongst neighbors and wildlife alike. Lastly, we respectfully ask for a single-story homes facing all west and south homes, all south and west homes. Again, thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
You're referring to the two homes that back up to McKinley Mills?
I'm not. I'm referring to those as well as the south properties. There's two homes to the south, there's two homes to the west where proposed homes are planned to be.
Is the map up there? Sir, can you bring up the site plan for your project so we can, council just understands what the request is?
That would be a total of approximately 10 homes.
Just point them out to us. It makes it a lot easier. Let the gentleman just point to us. Okay.
Where is the credit property?
South of that.
Okay, all right.
All righty, thank you. Please just leave that up there just in case we need it. Appreciate it. All righty. Next one I have is Tom Trusso. Trusso, I'm sorry. Wyatt, first?
Yes, sir, I do.
Do you still want me to call you when she's done? I'll let you make that decision. How about that?
Hi, Mr. Mayor and council.
Linda, how are you tonight?
Linda Trussean. I live on Artesia Street in Oviedo. Thank you all for serving our community. I have four points, and I hope I can get it done in time. The first is a question for the developer, and the other three are for council. I didn't get to see the diagram as he was laying it out, but I had two questions. One was about the access of the two homes that are on Shangri-La. He answered the one. But it looked like the road might be closed for part of the portion of where the driveway is for 1125 Shangri-La, and I just wanted to clarify that their existing driveway would still be intact where their gate is.
Linda, just hang on one second. David, can you take some notes of the, you don't have to answer them now. Take some notes, and then I'll have you come back up and address the questions.
And then for council, and I may have an outdated understanding, so please bear with me. It's my understanding that in the city of Oviedo, our lots are a minimum of 10,000 square feet, or at least, again, the last I knew, and these will be 8,500 square feet. And it seems, at least from, you know, outside looking in, that the developers can exploit some procedural loopholes by getting things approved through Seminole County first and then requesting annexation. So I'd like to see if that could be clarified, or if the lot size has been reduced since then.
We will have our staff, staff, you take notes of that and address that at the appropriate time.
Thank you. And the next one is about the traffic in the northwest quadrant. I live on Artesia Street. When Centex built our development, there were 32 homes that are directly on Artesia Street within Bentley Woods, but we have way more traffic than 320 trips a day. In fact, in the, I've lived there 22 years. In the past dozen years or so, we've had a dozen new neighborhoods in the northwest quadrant or nearby. I can list them all for you. And I see these people, I know them, they cut through on Artesia Street because they want to get to Publix, or they want to get to Oviedo High School, or they want to get to The Home Depot, and it's easier to cut through Artesia and Pine rather than go through downtown. So I would ask you, please, do something about the traffic. In fact, I would note that two streets have been closed in the northwest quadrant. One is Myrtle Street, and the other is Newcastle. But no new traffic lanes have been added while all these new neighborhoods have been built. Also, on that point, somebody said they'd like to have a traffic light put in at the end of Artesia. I would still maintain that wouldn't be a good idea. I think that would encourage more traffic on Artesia. And I think Hammock Lane or DeLeon Street might be a better place if there were going to be a new traffic light. My last question has to do with something I read just this evening about the new neighborhood. It says that there'll be a sanitary sewer, and I didn't know there was a sanitary sewer anywhere near here. I'd like to know when Bentley Woods could tap into that. And those are my questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Linda. Dr. Carrera, could you address the square footage of the lots first? And then, Mr. Wyatt, I'm going to ask you to address the sanitary sewer. I know the answer to that. I know the answer to it, but I'd rather it come from you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Well, they are applying for R1 zoning. The minimum lot size according to Land Development Code is 8,500, so 8,500 square feet. This is also the minimum square footage that the surrounding neighborhood has. All the other lots are R1.
Now, when you say the surrounding neighborhoods, are you referring to Hammock Preserve, Terolago?
Yes, I think we have in our, in our packet in the zoning application.
Okay.
You have a map with the zoning for this property and all the surrounding zonings.
Dr. Carrera, do you know what?
1606.
Do you know what their average lot size is? I mean, have they, because a lot of times...
No, because at this point, we didn't review any plans. This is, we haven't PSP at this point. This is annexation, the comprehensive plan and zoning.
I extend the process, I was just asking a question.
We don't have, we haven't reviewed any plans yet.
Alright, great, thank you so much. Mr. Wyatt, question of sewer was brought up.
Well, the immediate answer is we have to retrofit Bentley Woods first, and the cost associated with that would have to be analyzed and see what benefit there is to the city is, and not to mention the cost there is to the resident to hook up and the impact fees.
Bobby, do we currently have mandatory hookup policy to sewer in the city?
Yes, sir.
So that would be something we'd have to do as well?
Yes, sir.
Alrighty, so it's not in the current plans, but the lines are up there where it could occur one day?
Yes, sir, I mean, ultimately, we would love to have the entire city sewered, but there is enormous cost associated with that and figure out where do we start?
Right, where the cost would be, and again, without mandatory hookup, there's no way to drop tens of million dollars' worth of sewer lines in the roads and...
Yes, sir, we need to recover some of those costs. It would be extreme.
Bobby, what's the main sewer? Is it up Pine? Isn't it up Pine? Go halfway up Pine?
No, sir, the primary sewer right now in that area is along St. Louis 434.
Okay.
The new development's on 434, I'll have sanitary sewer.
Didn't we put something up Pine a year, years ago?
No, sir, there's only water up Pine.
I think it came up Division is what you're thinking of.
There is a force lane on Division Street as well, yes, sir.
So it's just a matter, as the mayor was saying, it's there, all those neighborhoods could hook up, but it's just the tremendous cost of...
Yeah, it's expensive.
Retrofitting neighborhoods.
Yes, sir.
3,000 a home just for reclaiming, I can imagine what sewer is.
The last I heard several years ago is five to $6,000 per home.
Alrighty. Anybody have any questions, Mr. Wyatt, on the sewer system? Thank you, Mr. Wyatt. Mr. Evans, you had a question on access of a home, I heard.
Thank you, Mayor, David Evans, Evans Engineering. Yeah, there was a few questions I'd like to respond to if I could, as well as the driveway access, and I'm pretty sure we're talking about the Shangri-La Lane and the driveways that are currently on Shangri-La Lane. When we improve Shangri-La Lane and up to the property of existing residents, the idea is, any driveways that exist on Shangri-La Lane now, any access that's there that's permitted or being used will be connected up to the new city right-of-way per city standards, just like you would with a concrete driveway turnout to the edge of the right-of-way line. The Betty Costley property currently accesses through a driveway on the north side of the property and accesses round to Shangri-La Lane. The change will be that she will now access her property, her residence, through the new city right-of-way development. So that will be abandoned, is the question.
Just wait one second. Ms. Trussein, did that answer your question?
No, it's the other property, it's just what she was asking about.
Alrighty.
There is a five-acre tract, which is another bank, banks is a structure.
Does somebody live there?
Nobody lives there. No, it's been abandoned for years, so there's a structure, according to the realtors, a structure on zoning, and they can be able to access it here.
Excellent.
They have 20 feet.
Was that the dedication you were talking about earlier to the city?
The dedication would go to right, to the new lot two.
Hang on just one second. Ms. Trussein, why don't you come on up, just take a quick look at what he's doing, since it was your question?
My understanding is the driveway is on the right. There's...
Yeah, the driveways are that.
Okay, this is on her property, this doesn't go away.
Okay, so they're saying that the access would be...
Right here, yeah, sure. Shangri-La Lane literally goes to right here, the Betty Costley gate is.
Okay, oh, this is the...
No, that's not the gate, she comes out of, she comes out onto somebody else's property.
Oh, okay.
Then there's this gate here.
Can I make this issue?
Yes. She, the basement on this property.
Do you have anything else to add?
Just a couple, couple quick comments. Obviously, we're in the process of a subdivision plan. We're here just for the annexation, comp plan, and zoning process, so we have some time to work the, some of the elements out with staff and with the community as well. As far as the buffers and existing buffers, obviously, we're working all we can, as the other developments have occurred and communities have occurred, both on the west and on the north side, you know, worked hard to try and mitigate as many, as much natural vegetation as possible. Obviously, there is a tree ordinance in the city of Oviedo. We completely intend on complying with that tree ordinance, so when we count the trees, we have to come out for the infrastructure and the homes, much like everyone else does in the city of Oviedo, we'll be putting trees back in. So our idea is to put our efforts on areas that we've heard tonight and previously at the community meetings, especially on the south side and the west side, to make sure that that is vegetated. We also have some ideas for some buffers and treatments on both sides. Obviously, you know, in the city of Oviedo, when you have a residential neighborhood backing up to another residential neighborhood, there isn't any required buffers. It would be unlike zoning, like a commercial or industrial, so in this case, we're going to do what we can also, in addition to what's required, to buffer both of those sides.
I'd like to just mention one other thing, that literally, everything here is in yellow, the whole area, which is R1, everything is yellow, except ours right now is the only agricultural land that's in the county. Everything else is R1 already.
Right, I saw that in the staff report.
Last thing is the lot size, because I think there was some comments about lot sizes, so we want to make sure we're clear on how that's going to work. Minimum lot size proposed for the 23 lots, as summarized in your report, is 80 feet wide by 120 feet deep. So our minimum size is 9,600 square feet.
Okay.
Minimum, obviously, for zoning is 8,500, so we exceed that.
Right, similar to what happens with a lot of developments, which is why I asked the question.
Yep.
We don't have anything between that R1 and that R1A, and you get trapped sometimes.
Yes, that's right.
Does Council have any questions? Don't go anywhere.
Yes.
Go ahead.
I just had, want to touch on one thing, Mr. Evans. So, the minimum lot you'll do is 9,600 square feet.
That's right, minimum size, 80 by 120, 9,600 square. Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Councilwoman?
Yes, I have a question. When you did your Hammock Park density study, did you only include the lands east and north? Because it says in here in this letter that north and west was not included.
They were, they actually are developed, so on the south and the east, they do have the same comp plan designation, same zoning designation, so they could be developed in the same manner that the ones on the west and the north were developed, but the current, and beyond that, you know, once you go further south, or once you go further east, then you have other developments that also have the same land use and zoning designation. So our study extended out beyond the properties that were undeveloped at this time, but in our case, yes, the ones directly adjacent to the property, which are the west and north, were subject to a study based on the fact that they're developed.
So you didn't include the south and east?
The east, the east property to the east of us, one is a church to the further south, and then there's a five-acre tract which was...
Okay, right.
Supposed to be built by a developer, which was never built, they, what...
That's where Hammock Reserve was supposed to be.
Hammock Reserve was supposed to come through. What it kind of looks like is, there was like, I would consider a get shorty kind of a thing, where she put all her debt to the last, that little small section of four, so, but the density wouldn't have changed if it was developed, it would have been basically five lots on two acres of usable acreage, so it's not going to, it wouldn't have changed the looking on that. The only question you're asking is about the south.
Okay, yes.
We did not take into the south because we looked at developments for development. His property, if he chose to, he could redevelop his property into what everyone else has, and that, we didn't, we didn't take that into account.
Could you show us that map again? Now, you said all that yellow is R1?
Yes, sir.
Could you show my staff that and see if they concur?
It could say no. It says no.
Okay, I just want to make sure. So, everything that we see there, and all the yellow is R1? Okay. I'm sorry, Councilwoman, go ahead.
I guess what I'm struggling with, so I'm not going to get into the weeds and all the details of that, I guess what I'm struggling with is I've heard many times that you're going to preserve the natural barrier, and then I go look, and there may be one tree left. You know, you cut down trees, and you're cutting 20, 30 years of that tree that is gone, and that is, that is what Oviedo is about. You know, we love our trees. I love the trees. So I guess I'm a little cautious and concerned when you say you're going to preserve, try to preserve as much as you can. Like I said, I've heard it, and then I've seen it, you go there and it's nothing, and in that's, this part of town, you have a different environment, and I keep hearing that we're putting in the developments where we're cramming in homes, and I realize your lots are bigger, but I'm someone that sits on an acre and a half, and I love that, and trust me, when people come over, they'll say, where can I get a piece of property like this in Oviedo? And I say, well, you can't find them anymore. But I don't want my neighborhood also to be surrounded by houses that are on small pieces of property. I think it takes away from, not only the value, but the, just the, just the, what we like about it, the nature, the openness of it. So I think that's what I'm struggling with, because I keep hearing about the lot size, and everyone's saying 9,600 is big. To me, it's not big. It's smaller, and I hate to see it, that, to affect the surrounding areas that have bigger lots. So, I would just tell you to please keep as much, you know, work with the neighbors, do what you can for them, and to consider that, because people have been here for a long time, and they want to enjoy their house, they want to enjoy their property, and keep as much of the natural barrier as you possibly can, and more.
We're in the middle of preparing what's called the preliminary subdivision plan, that's the next step in the process, and like Mr. Craig emphasized, during that process, you do things like grading and stormwater and utilities, and you figure out the level of the land and where it needs to go, much like the developments are currently on the north and the east side. You have to lift it up, because groundwater is an issue in this particular area. We have to deal with that, and we have to make sure we pay attention to that. We attempt in all cases, you know, trees don't fall in the exact right spot based on what we're trying to do. So what we do is try to move around and tailor our development to be as consistent as we can with the natural surroundings. We really do, but at the end of the day, when you get done, you know, if the tree is leaning, or if it has a, we have a professional arborist that's already gone out on the property, that's one of the things that we take care of in this particular process, and the reason we do that is because some trees look beautiful and are picked up by a surveyor, that's a, you know, eight-inch tree or 10-inch tree, may be diseased or have a problem with it, so we want to make sure we define what trees are good, where they are, what the elevations are, what the canopy size is, so that we can protect that tree if we possibly can. So what we do around the perimeters on all these types of projects is, the best we can, where the trees are located, try to preserve them, either through tree wells or some other grading aspect of that. It's a little difficult to do in some cases, but we do feel like we're meeting the current development pattern in this particular area. If you look on the maps, if you look on your map above you, you see that we're not trying to minimize the lot size anymore, any different than the way that these were proposed originally like this. So, we feel like infill projects are a great thing for a city, and we feel like we're trying to do the best we can to get this one presented to you in a way that you'll accept it and work with the community at the same time.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you know, we're, we're at the beginning of the process. We've said that many times in the past, and I don't know why we're not saying it a lot now, but this is annexation, we're talking annexation, and as Ms. Trussein said, I think she said, you know, can someone, can you, you could have looked on the next steps where you're looking to get some zoning, get zoning that would be more beneficial in the county than is here. We require, we give you less zoning than is going to be required in there. Our tree ordinance is harder than the county's, et cetera, et cetera. So I'll just say, you know, we have to trust the process that we have out there, we've got a process out there that's worked, we have to trust our own process, trust the staff to run that process, but we're at annexation. We're nowhere near looking at those pictures, examining those pictures, and seeing those things. I know our staff will make you look at those pictures, look at what's surrounding, et cetera, et cetera, but we're way in the early stages of the process. I think we just need to remember that a little bit. Thanks. Councilman Hackett?
Yeah, I think Councilman Hackett hit it right, and that's what I was going to say. I mean, right now, we're at the annexation, but you know, reading through Mr. and Mrs. Craig's letter here, and listening to you guys, I'm not sure that you're all that far apart. I think you have a, the lack of a better word, a historic couple living on a historic lot in Oviedo, somebody with a lot of history in the city that is looking to preserve, you know, what they have, so, you know, should this pass, and when it comes back with PSP, if it does pass tonight, you may have to put a few more trees out there, you may have to keep this a little bit more natural. I also read they're a little concerned about the PVC fence, and I don't want to get into a big, long thing, because we'd be here for...
Oh, please don't.
No, but you're generally looking...
We'll do that at PSP.
Generally looking, I think Mr. Craig points out that he would be, you know, almost agreeable to support this if there could be some kind of other natural thing. They're trying, I think you all know, they're trying to preserve the natural beauty of this property and where they live, and keep it a little, a little quiet. So, I think you're close, you might have to have a few more lunch meetings and stuff, you might be able to get there if it passes, but keep that clearly in mind.
Councilman Britton, do you have anything to add?
I got a couple questions. One is, has this property been cleared already?
Underbrush has been cleared to do the survey work, cut the lines, the survey work, and do some tree surveys, and so, so far, that's been done, but the trees are still there. Other than that, everything's there.
Okay. I guess my question is for Mr. Root, and I'm not sure, is this the appropriate time to be having these conversations when we're talking about annexation? Or can we have these conversations before we approve the development plan or somewhere down the line in the process?
You're way premature talking about these things.
Okay. Let's assume, I'm not going to be presumptuous, but let's assume we approve this annexation and it goes through, is there any kind of implied agreement that we will go along with the developer's plans as he gave us, or can we, can we ask for them to make some changes later on?
You can ask, but there's no agreement, there's no agreement absent pre-annexation agreement.
Okay. Well, you know, I think what we got to do is go ahead and annex in, and then I think what we always do is we actually go back and work with those neighbors that have come up here, and try to come to an agreement, you know, and I was up in St. Augustine, very similar neighborhood called Palencia, and they saved a lot of trees by building stem wall construction rather than slab-on-grate, and it was beautiful, and they got a premium for those lots, for keeping those trees in. So, I'd suggest you get with Mr. Craig, he knows what he's doing, and come back to us with something that everyone agrees to, and then we'll all get along.
Anybody? Alright, just two cents from me. I had asked for you to come down at our last meeting and make this presentation.
Yes, sir.
You know, I'm fully coxen to the fact that we're way ahead of where we should be.
Yes, sir.
You know, the reason that I requested that is that you've made this presentation to the neighbors, and it was very helpful that the council saw the same presentation, because we obviously work for the people who are in this room. No disrespect to yourselves, I mean, you're free to, the free market, and if we can make something work out, and you could build us a nice project, that would be wonderful. The one concern I have is I would like you to work a little bit further as we go through this process with Mr. Craig. He's a very reasonable man, he's a very educated man, he understands engineering, you might even learn a thing or two... You might even learn a thing or two. You never know. And I, but as Councilman Henken said and Councilman Britton and everybody else, you're not far off. You know, the easy answer is always no, no, no. You know, the hard answer is yes, how do I get you there? So, why don't we work on more yes, how we're going to get you there before we come back with PSP and all of that, so we don't have to rehash the whole thing? Looking through what, do you have a copy of this by any chance?
No, sir.
Why don't you take mine? And I'll get a copy from the clerk. You're not far off when you read that, guys. You're really not. And I, I think if you just sat down with the family and as you have with the Bentley, excuse me, the McKinley Mills folks, you can, you know, come to an agreement on a little bit more of a natural buffer. I, I heard Mr. Craig say he may even let you come onto his side a little bit in order to help create that. You don't know what's going to happen unless you have a friendly conversation. So, let's see where this all goes this evening. As Mr. Root said, I mean, we are just, you know, way ahead. I mean, we're, we're back on the one-yard line trying to get a touchdown. So, I mean, we've got a long way to go here. But before you all come back at that later date, I, I would like to have everybody coming into this room singing kumbaya and something's been worked out than putting us in the position of having to make a decision, you know, choosing you or choosing them. Because that could be a tough spot for you. All right. Thank you so much.
Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Cobb?
Can I address one of the statements that was made? There was a question regarding getting some approvals in the county and then coming to the city. The fact that you're annexing this property now before beginning the development process, there's no way that can happen unless you do not approve the annexation.
Mr. Cobb, let me ask you that same exact question in a different way. Are folks allowed to use our services if they don't annex into our city?
No, sir.
There you go. That was taken care of back in 2004-ish, five-ish?
Maybe even before that.
Right. So, there we go. All righty. Tom, I never called you up again, so I do apologize. Did you get all your questions answered?
Uh, yeah.
All righty. I, I apologize. I flipped you over with Linda and completely forgot. All right, great. Just wanted to make sure before I move on. Hearing nothing else, I am going, well, let me just ask one last time. Is there anybody else in the audience who do, would want to address this on this item? Yes.
Well, I was unable to get here on time for the meeting because I was at work. My name is Judy Olson, and I live southeast of the property at 297 West Artesia Street in a cluster we call Artesia Woods. We're a cluster of seven lots, and I'd like to address the, the traffic that is going to dissolve or come about this Hammond Park. I live in the very heart of the traffic zone of Artesia Street, also across the street from the added cars from the church. Artesia Street is known as the feeder road into Artesia Woods, McKinley's Mills, Bentley, and the homes south on Pine Street and just north of Pine Street. Since the closing of McKinley's Mills access from Artesia Street and the addition of homes north on Pine Street and the building of the church, Artesia Street from 434 to Pine was transformed from a feeder to into a major thoroughfare. Traffic has increased significantly on Artesia Street past our home and our neighbors' homes in Artesia Woods as well as Bentley. Speed limits have been ignored. Cars increase their speeds east on Artesia once they round the bend coming from Bentley and west on Artesia from the stop sign at Lake Jessup, making it difficult to enter Artesia safely. Vehicles accelerate past the stop sign at Lake Jessup and noise ordinances are completely ignored. The speed limit is 25 on Artesia, and I have averaged the speed of 35 to 40, and witness cars drive right straight through that stop sign at Lake Jessup. Already lost one dog. Don't want to lose another. I would like to know from the council if the traffic signal is going to be installed at Artesia and State Road 434. You should also know that there is no right turn lane onto Artesia southbound on 434, causing already a dangerous situation for those right turners onto Artesia, including myself, from 434. Before 23 homes are approved, please address and consider the traffic issues and solutions if Artesia is to be a feeder street for this development to accommodate the cars from Hammond.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing portion of the meeting and move on to the pleasure of council.
May I make a motion to adopt ordinance number 1603?
Begging. A motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Deputy Mayor?
No.
Councilman Britton? Councilwoman?
No, sir.
Nope. Traffic study will be part of what they have to do at a later date, so they'll, they'll get to that. And when we get to that point, we will address it. As you know, we've had many struggles over the years. We did try a few things in Bentley Woods years back and, you know, the circles and speed bumps and it, it is an issue and we do understand that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Just real quick. Chief, I think you heard what she said about the traffic, and I, I will tell you, I've seen our police department doing a lot of enforcement in other neighborhoods, and it works. So, maybe, Chief, can you give it a, an extra look out there? Slow them down? There you go. Slow them down a bit. Thank you, sir.
This Park Van Huyzen up there for a couple of days and you guys will take care of it.
On his motorcycle.
Nah, I'll be out with his motorcycle anymore. All righty, we're digressing. Motion on the table is to adopt ordinance number 1603. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item number 1604. These are all companions. 1604 is Comprehensive Plan Amendment. Mr. Root, can you read that by title on the floor, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance of the City of Oviedo, Florida amending ordinance number 896, said ordinance being the comprehensive land planning ordinance as previously amended, providing for amendment to the City of Oviedo Comprehensive Plan, changing the future land use of approximately nine and 24 one-thousandths acres described in this ordinance from Seminole County Low Density Residential to City Low Density Residential, providing for legislative findings and intent, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for codification and directions to the code codifier, and providing for an effective date. That's the ordinance by title, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Root. Mr. Cobb, please enlighten us.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request to amend the future land use map to incorporate the property you just annexed into the future land use map with a future land use designation of Low Density Residential. If you look on the screen, we are talking about the property that is in, placed in yellow is what we're talking about here, this 9.024 acres. The Seminole County Low Density Residential has a maximum density of four dwelling units per acre. The city low density residential has a maximum density of 3.5 dwelling units per acre. Essentially, this future land use map amendment functions as a change of jurisdiction is what it does. This is a small-scale land use map amendment. If the council does adopt, it will be forwarded to the Department of Economic Opportunity. Depending on what they do, if they choose not to review, it will become effective in 31 days. It is, the future land use map designation of Low Density Residential is compatible with the surrounding future land use designations. The Development Review Committee and Planning, Zoning and Appeals Board both recommend adoption of the future land use map amendment. It's recommended that city council conduct a public hearing and adopt ordinance number 1604.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Applicant, do you have anything to add, or have we covered it all? We're good? All righty. Want to reserve the right to answer any questions?
No.
Okay. All righty. This is a public hearing. I do have written requests. I'll run through them in the exact order that we called them before. Mr. Craig, do you have anything to add? Not at this time? Mr. Brinkman?
No.
Okay, sir. Mr. Trussein? No? Come on, Tom. You're, no? Come on up. We just got to get you up on the camera, Tom.
My name is Tom Trussein, 47 Artesia Street, Oviedo. The only question I really had was, is there a plan to gate the entrance to the community? It's probably better to ask later when you're doing all that planning stuff, but that's the one I had.
All righty, great. We'll see if they want to answer for us, okay?
Okay.
All righty, thank you. That is the end of the written request. Anybody else? Gentlemen, do you have any intention on gating it yet, or we're not that far along?
No.
I'm sorry. Can you come on up to my phone? Sorry.
We're not that far along.
Is it an option?
Yeah, it could, if they, you know, if the builder that is going with us in there would, wants to gate it, we would probably gate it.
Okay. Now, my staff is over there going, "No gates." I know what they're thinking, but that's okay. I like gated communities. That's just my opinion. All righty. Is there anybody else who wants to address council before I close the public hearing?
Got one over here.
Where? I'm sorry. Okay.
That's something Cindy Gregos said that intrigued me about the properties that weren't included in the study for the lots that are located south and east of the subject property. Those lots are larger lots, and I'm one of them. The properties that sit just south and east of the subject property, I was wondering if they're going to redo their study to include, incorporate the size of those lots.
I'm not sure what the-
They're like the Craig's, four acres. I'm on one acre. Our neighbors are on five acres. Pity corner from us, they're on like two to five acres.
I'll find out from our staff what the requirements are. We'll find out from staff. Anybody else who'd like to address council? Seeing none, I'm closing the public comment portion. And Dr. Carrera, could you just let us know what the requirements are for a study of what lots, surrounding lots of the, if there are any requirements? Or, Mr. Cobb, do you want to handle that?
I'll let her. She's coming forward.
There are no requirements for a study like that. I think it was produced because of, because of the meeting with the residents, so it's a good, you know, but it was not a requirement.
What is the staff's opinion? I mean, obviously, DRC approved it, PZA approved it. Are all the majority of surrounding properties compatible?
In the staff meeting, we have, although we don't have a plan for these development, we have in our, in the staff meeting that we produce the average sizes of the lots of the surrounding areas. It, everything is R1, but it seems that they are around 10,000 square feet, so a little bit larger than the minimum lot size for R1, which is 8,500. But they are all in the same zoning, so technically, they can also develop in, in the future their properties meeting the minimum standards for the, for the lot sizes of R1.
As you mentioned earlier.
Yes.
Anybody have any questions for Dr. Carrer?
Yeah, I have a question. So, so you can pick what borders you want to include in this study. You don't have to include all borders?
No, there was no, no requirement for studying, that they would require to study the, the surrounding areas. We do, in our report, we do to see, when we are proposing a new zoning, we do a study to see what is the, if it's compatible or not. And in this case, it is compatible because they are all surrounded by R1, the same zoning.
Okay, I, maybe I'm confused and I'm not quite understanding it.
Look, if I may for a second, let me help.
Sure.
Can you bring up your yellow map back there? You want it in all yellow?
The study was just an internal for them. They created a study for themselves and for the homeowners, I believe.
Yes. It's not a requirement.
Now, that's a career-
Well, I guess I'm questioning our process.
This is, this is what came out from our staff?
Can I see it closer?
This is our zoning map, right? This is, it's not a study. It's just a zoning map of the surrounding. So, we have, can I?
Yeah, please. Bring it over to Councilwoman.
So, so R1 can be what size? Is, are there, does it start at a size?
It's a minimum. We establish a minimum.
A minimum, so it can go up to several acres?
Yes.
Okay.
We don't have maps, right? To be have a minimum.
Right.
So, this is existing zoning. This is, right now, they are agricultural because they are still in the county, and it's surrounded by R1. And they are proposing to, to have R1 in the city.
Okay.
So, it's compatible.
Okay, so we, we say, okay, R1 is fine, and we do not say, okay, this, these lots over here are 8,500 square feet, these lots over here are 1,500 square feet, I mean, 15,000 square feet, and then these are an acre. So, we don't, we don't have a, we don't have a say-so in what size that should be as far as the lot size.
In reality, no. I mean, we, we establishes the minimum. The minimum is 8,500.
Okay.
So, you have in, in a city, you have, you know, lots of-
So, as long as they are the minimum-
Yes.
Of what that's, what that is.
We say that the minimum then would be fine.
Okay.
If they were proposing a smaller size, then we would say, well, this is not compatible with the surroundings.
Okay. All right. I understa, thank you, Teresa.
And this is the proposed zoning, the existing zoning, and these are future land use because they're also changing the comprehensive plan. So, these are all our maps. This is not a-
Okay.
Specific study.
Thank you.
But we can't have a say. When they come back with the PSP, that's where we'll have, their proposals will be in the PSP that we're going to look at and approve. That will have the lot sizes, et cetera, that we will be looking at, again, with minimums, but that will be, I must say, the opportunity, but when we'll get a view of what lot sizes they're really proposing, et cetera, at that size.
And all of the standards for it.
Thank you. Any other questions of council?
No, sir.
What is the pleasure of council?
Motion to adopt 1604?
Begging. Motion second. Anything else? Deputy Mayor?
No, sir.
Councilman Henken?
No, sir.
Councilman Britton? Councilwoman? All righty. With no further discussion, the motion on the table is to adopt. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on, we're up to ordinance number 1605, again, a compatible amendment to what we've been discussing. Mr. Root, can you please read it by title?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance of the City of Oviedo, Florida amending ordinance number 896, said ordinance being the comprehensive land planning ordinance as previously amended, providing for amendment to the City of Oviedo Comprehensive Plan, changing the future land use of approximately one in 87 one-thousandths acres from Seminole County Low Density Residential to City Low Density Residential, being described in this ordinance, providing for legislative findings and intent, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for codification and directions to the code codifier, and providing for an effective date. That's the ordinance by title, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Root, Mr. Cobb, can you enlighten us?
Thank you, Mayor. As with the, the last item, this is a, a, an amendment to the Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map to incorporate the property on the, in the map on the screen, the black part, that's got the black crosshatch. This is approximately 1.087 acres. It is currently designated with Seminole County Low Density Residential. The proposed amendment is to designate the property with the city Low Density Residential. As we mentioned before, this is a reduction in maximum density from four in the county to 3.5 in the city. It is a small-scale future land use map amendment. The proposed future land use designation is compatible with all the future land use designations in the area. The Development Review Committee and the Planning, Zoning, and Appeals Board both recommend adoption of this future land use map amendment. It's recommended that counsel conduct a public hearing and adopt ordinance number 1605.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Applicant have anything to add? Covered for now. Reserve the right to answer, blah, blah, blah. All righty. Public hearing, I'll go through them in order. Mr. Craig, anything? Mr. Brinkman? Mr. Trucey? Nope. Mister? Nope, we're good. Anybody like to address counsel? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing and move on to the pleasure of counsel.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman?
Make a motion to adopt ordinance number 1605.
Second.
Motion second. Anything, Councilman?
No, sir.
Councilman Brinkman?
Good.
Counselor?
No.
Good. Deputy Mayor?
No, sir.
All righty. Hearing no discussion, the motion on the table is to adopt. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. 1606, last one, zoning map amendment. Mr. Groot, can you please read this by title only?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance of the City of Oviedo, Florida, amending the official zoning map to change the zoning districts approximately 10 in 11, 100th acres, locate on the west side of Shankar Law Lane, and on the north side of Artigia Street, from Seminole County Agriculture A1 to City R1. Providing for legislative findings and intent implementing actions, non-codification, severability, conflicts, and ineffective dates. That's the ordinance by title, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Groot, Mr. Cobb.
Thank you, Mayor. On your map on the screen, this is going to involve both properties, the entire 10.11 acres. This is to incorporate the properties into the city's official zoning map. The requested R1 zoning classification is compatible and consistent with the surrounding zoning classifications. Also, this is consistent with the low-density residential future land use map designations that you just adopted. The Development Review Committee and the Planning, Zoning, and Appeals Board both recommend adoption of this zoning map amendment. It is recommended that counsel conduct a public hearing and adopt ordinance number 1606.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Applicant? Nope. Reserve the right? All righty. I'll just run through them all. How about this? Anybody want to speak? Come on up.
The zoning issue is, yeah, I'm Mike Craig, 1030 Shankar Law Lane. The zoning issue is where I feel like city council, city locking itself in, we talk about compatibility, but you talk about everything but lot size. It's almost a smoke and mirrors. Yeah, the zoning is a minimum 8,500 square feet, whatever it is under R1. Once you approve that zoning, that will be the target for business purposes. We need to get as close to that as we can. If, when we get into looking at the details later, you say, shoot, we should have been 11,000, 12,000 square feet, now we're looking out, and we see that's what's out here, which is for everything except for the north side, everybody's on septic tank system out there. And unless some rules have changed, and I'm pretty sure most of this development went on, the state required, if you're on septic tank, you had to be a quarter acre, which is just a little under 1,000 square feet. So, that's going to be the smallest lot that we're going to find out there. Then you're going to have the larger pieces of property like ours and a lot of our neighbors. So, you're, you're compatible with a lot of rhetoric, but you're not compatible with actual lot sizes in the R1 size category. Now, I don't know exactly how you fix that unless you require them to go to a higher level in the classification than what they've actually requested. But legally, once you've approved that, they come back in, and they're right smack on that minimum lot size, I think you're going to have trouble negotiating anything different legally. And I didn't quite understand, attorney made some comment about pre-annexation agreement. I don't know what you can or can't do in regards to that, fixing some, some lot sizes.
What developers can't do is go to the county and get all the approvals in the county, because that's higher density.
Right.
And then come into the city and get our services.
Okay, but do you have the ability to reach an agreement when you're annexing a piece of property for an applicant to reach in and get some commitments at this time? We're not going to go less than 11,000 square feet, because that's what, what your neighbors really are. They're not this minimum R1, because it can't be under septic tanks. That's a different reason why they are that size, or why they had a minimum requirement, but it seems like we've kind of skated around the lot size issue and keep saying compatible, compatible, compatible. It's not compatible with many of the home sites out there.
We'll take it up with staff. We'll get the yellow map back up here.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Kind of close the public hearing. Dr. Carrera, I have another question for you, please. You mentioned earlier that the surrounding communities being McKinley Mills, Terolago, Hammock Reserve, I think it's called, and whatever the new Taylor Morrison is, I don't know what they're calling it. Those are all R1?
Yes.
Do you know the lot sizes?
So, for Hammock Reserve, here in the report, we have the property, the lots are eight feet by 125 feet, so 1,000 square feet.
Okay, so 80 by 125.
Mm-hmm. McKinney's Mills subdivision, 85 by 125.
Okay, slightly bigger because they have septics.
10,625. This is the, the two that we have here.
Those are the two you have there. Terolago was, was R1, I remember when we did that, and Taylor Morrison just came in at R1.
Do you remember sizes? But they're all R1.
Okay, thank you. Oh, excuse me. Anybody else have any questions for Dr. Carrera? Thank you. Dale, come on up. I was waiting to get to this, to ask you this question. Are you saying here on the record this evening that your minimum lot size is 9,600 square feet?
Correct.
And no smaller?
No smaller.
And you agree to that?
Absolutely.
One hundred percent.
This is what we planned. Market-wise, we couldn't even go smaller.
9,600 is the minimum.
Minimum.
How many of them are the minimum?
There's 23, 9,600.
Some will be bigger.
Some will be bigger.
Okay. Do you know at this time how many are the minimum, or we haven't gotten that far yet?
Bottom will be yours.
Okay. So, one more time, just come on up. So, we don't have a problem in the future when you come back with your PSP. You're agreeing right now on the record that you're getting a modified R1 zoning with a minimum lot size of 9,600 square feet?
Correct.
All righty, thank you. Anybody have any other questions? Staff? Nope. Anybody else want to address counsel?
Why we're not asking for R1A here, since we are looking at increased lot sizes?
The, the reason that we're not is the future land use map and the surrounding areas are R1.
Okay.
And that would be very difficult for us to do. We could ask, but they're under no obligation based on future land use.
Thank you.
You know, I think an important point to, to bring out, too, is he just said, you know, half of them will be bigger than 9,600 square feet, so that's pretty significant.
Yeah, because R1A gets up to 11,000, I believe, right? 10-8 or something like that?
10-8.
10-8, 9. We're real close to it to begin with. All righty, is there anybody else who would like to address counsel? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and move on to the pleasure of counsel.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman?
Motion to adopt ordinance number 1606.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion from anybody? I'll just blanket ask.
No, sir.
Nope. Hearing none, I'll call the vote. The motion on the table is to adopt. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All righty, moving along. We have first reading of ordinances, we have none, we have two resolutions, and I am going to call a quick five-minute recess, and then we'll get back to it. Barbara, you tell me when you're ready. Dale, you tell me when you're ready. You're good upstairs? Barbara's ready? All righty, folks, we're calling the meeting back to order. It is just about 8:20. Next item up is number 20, discussion, oh, no, I'm only kidding. Go to item number 18. It is the first resolution of the evening. It is number 2925-14. This is a site development order for Preserve at Oviedo on the Park. I guess that's lots nine and 10. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for counsel to approve site development order number 434-14. The total development area is 15.49 acres. The east side of the proposed development is located on Oviedo Boulevard, approximately 2,300 feet north of Mitchell Hammock Road. The development wraps around the protection area of, which is Track C of the Oviedo on the Park master plan. The west side of the development is approximately 1,348 feet east of Central Avenue. The subject property encompasses lots nine and 10 of the Oviedo on the Park master plan, and lots 33A and 33B. The future land use designation is mixed-use district, and the zoning district is new downtown, Sub District B. Development is a single-family subdivision with 44 lots. The lot sizes vary from 3,432 to 4,950 square feet. The, the app- The applicant has requested four deviations to the Land Development Code. The staff has reviewed the project and concluded that it is consistent with the comprehensive plan, the zoning district, as well as the Oviedo on the Park future master land use plan. It is recommended that City Council adopt Resolution Number 2925-14.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Is the applicant present?
Good evening. Kevin Kramer with David Weekly Homes. Appreciate all the hard work staff getting us to this point. We don't have a presentation, just here to answer any questions that you have. I've got my engineer, Paul Yergane, from VHB. Any technical questions? And then also the property owner's representative and his attorneys here if any questions come up.
Kevin, thank you. Let me just see if council have any questions for Mr. Kramer at this time?
No.
Thank you, sir. Let's see, I have no request-to-speak forms on this, so what is the pleasure of council on Resolution 2925-14?
So, Mayor, make a motion to adopt 2925...
2925. -14.
Second.
Do you need new glasses, Deputy Mayor?
I don't have reading glasses. I don't like bifocals.
All right, I heard a motion and a... I heard multiple seconds, so we'll just pick one. Deputy Mayor, you have the floor.
No, looks really good. Fine.
Councilman will give you the second.
Thank you. I'm good.
Councilman Hicken?
Just want to say, Oviedo on the Park is coming out great, and I think Mr. Cobb said it once before. This is a very unique project that needs some unique deviations at times to make it what it is. So, Mr. Kavanaugh, you and your staff, just keep rolling. It's looking good.
Not his project. Mr. Kramer.
We'll keep it rolling. Listen, to me, you're all one big family, so just make it look good.
Jeez. Councilman Braden?
Good.
Good? All righty. I do have one question. Mr. Cobb, maybe you can help me with it and direct me to whomever you'd like to answer it. Can somebody please explain and give me a diagram? Because we cannot open up the site plan. I'd like to know what deviation number two is all about and see how it's working. Won't open it. No, no, there's the big one. I'm assuming they're calling it South Division Street, so I'm assuming that's Oviedo Boulevard. Am I assuming correctly?
No, sir. No, sir, this is on the west side of the property. There are basically...
Do we have a map or something for reference?
Actually, if you look in there, I asked Linda if she could pull it up. Oh, you're gonna ask. You're gonna ask. No, good. That's good.
Actually, I was just trying to call you to bring my homework on this. That's the page. What we're talking about, council, is the west roadway.
Our minimum, minimum right-of-way width is what we're talking about.
So, they're calling this street?
Yes, sir.
South Division Street?
Yes, sir. And that is because of the old, original platte that this property touches. That right-of-way, it's a half right-of-way, that right-of-way is called South Division Street. And when discussing the design of the project with the applicant, also working in concert with Mr. Wyatt, we felt that we could go to, based on the type of development that's being proposed, based on the constraints of the property. Think about that we're dealing with a very large wetland system in the back and that it wraps around, that we do have environmental limitations. In working with that, we agreed that we could go down to a...
43.
Yeah, 43-foot right-of-way. We're still able to get the same amount of roadway within that 43 feet. So, that was what we were looking for.
I just assumed when I saw the name that it was an old reference to Oviedo Boulevard.
Correct.
And I was wondering, you know, what was going on over there? And Brian, I gotta tell you, you're bringing back memories standing right there. Now, look how quickly he's running off.
How many miles at that podium ride?
Thank you for that explanation. Now, you could have stayed there, but that's okay. What about a western extension? Wood, lawn, any one of those? It's not on the plan. I see the connection to, I guess, Boardwalk and Centerway Circle.
Mayor, we looked at every one of those. We initially, we started at High Street and Mr. Wyatt and Dr. Correa and Mr. Kramer and Mr. Axel. We all sit down, we looked at every one of them. We looked at if we could connect to High Street. We looked at wood, we looked at lawn, we looked at every one of them. High Street, we've got some issues with the difference between where the neighborhood is and where High Street is and how, if we tried to make a connection, it would negatively impact the existing residents. Basically, we would, the one person at the corner of High and the North-South Road, the old South Division, we basically end up taking out their driveway and part of their front yard. And it would be a very unreasonable or impact to that resident. When we looked at wood and lawn, there are wetland issues that would have to be overcome. We basically would be at the mercy of the St. John's River Water Management District. And if you recall, back when we had a two-acre mitigation for Oviedo Boulevard, we ended up, it was 20 to 1 was our mitigation. We ended up having to purchase 40 acres of land. And we had to do it, we ended up not able to find enough land and we ended up buying credits and other wetland banks. So, it, we, when we looked at it, we looked at the goal. The goal was to be able to get the residents west to 434 without having to make them go to Oviedo Boulevard. And so, we worked with Mr. Kramer and we came up with a solution to connect the neighborhood to City Plaza. And what that does by creating that connection is that it will then give them access to Boardwalk. And Boardwalk will get them out to 434 without having to go over to Oviedo Boulevard. It also gets them direct access to Mitchell Hammock Road via City Plaza. So, we felt that was the best way. We still will look at how maybe one day we might be able to connect to wood or lawn, maybe. Or if we look at, you know, how to not impact that resident on High Street. But right now, it's just not feasible and we found that it was better for us to work within the constr... Work, actually, working within the master plan of Oviedo on the Park and making the connection to City Plaza.
Brian, do we, are we maintaining any easements where those connections could possibly be for the future?
Yes, sir, the right-of-way's there. I mean, it's already platted as far as, you know, High and Wood and Lawn. I mean, the platted right-of-way's there.
Right, but we have easements into whatever they're calling this road, is what I'm saying.
Oh, yes, sir. Yes, sir, that was through the master plan, yes, sir. We were able, that's all taken care of.
That's all. So, if sometime in the future we can figure out one of those, we can connect right up to this and we're not buying right-of-way from an HOA or anything?
Actually, we're looking at the connection being made as part of the development of the property.
I'm sorry?
The connection down to City Plaza and Boardwalk, we're making that part of the development of the property.
I'm talking about west, west connections.
The west connection's to Lawn and High and...
Right, do we have easements or access?
There's right-of-way. Yes, sir, there's right-of-way there.
Okay, so on that, on that map, wherever wood, lawn, or anything would be, we have right-of-way connections?
There's right-of-way there, yes, sir. It's already platted.
So, we won't be buying it from an HOA 20 years from now if that should ever occur?
Not unless development comes along and re-does everything in that area, no, sir.
Okay.
The platte's already there.
That's all I need to hear. That's the only question I had. Does anybody have any other questions? No? Well, as was mentioned, this is a unique product, a product that has been built in the city of Oviedo and I think it's going to be a well-received. There is a definite need for a smaller lot, bungalow, whatever we want to call it, type product. The only recommendation that I will make to you, because I take folks around and show them homes all the time, are Asta bedrooms downstairs, please. If you can work that into your plan, that would be an absolute home run. So, just a thought for you this evening. Any other questions from council? Do I have a motion on table yet?
You do.
Yes, I do. All righty. Motion on table is to adopt. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Dave, you have to stay to the end, I'm sorry. Thank you, gentlemen. Go build a nice project. All right, moving right along, we are up to the last action item this evening. It is Resolution Number 2926-14. This is site development order number 433-14 and it is for Phase Two of Park Place Apartments. Mr. Cobb?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Tonight, council's asked to approve Site Development Order Number 433-14. It's for the first mixed-use building within Oviedo on the Park. Proposed development's going to be located on the east side of City Plaza Way. This is directly across the street from the existing apartments. And it's also at the intersection with Center Lake Court that comes around. The subject property is approximately 2.31 acres. The applicant is proposing to construct a four-story building, mixed-use, with 32 apartments and 15,058 square feet of retail and restaurant uses. The retail and restaurant uses are going to be located on the ground floor along City Plaza Way. It is an L-shaped building. It also has frontage on Center Lake Lane. The residential units are located on the ground floor of the building on Center Lake Lane. As I said before, this is the first mixed-use building. There's also going to be a total of 77 parking spaces located on the east side of the building. The application does require deviations. There are three deviations that deal with the site plan and then there are approximately eight deviations that deal with the building. The staff has reviewed the plans and one of the things that was raised to us earlier, I had an interesting conversation with Dr. Fruitt and we were talking about the criteria for the deviations and one of the things that she mentioned was that we didn't bring up, there weren't any mitigative techniques. And that's one of the criteria, but it's not one that you have to meet. We don't require you to meet every criteria. But the question that I asked Dr. Fruitt was, did the design merit the deviations? And she answered yes. And so, what we tell you is that the design itself provides the mitigative techniques for justifying of the deviations. It is recommended that the City Council adopt Resolution Number 2926-14. And the applicant, we're all here to address any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Applicant have a presentation?
Good evening. Paul Yergane with VHB, office in Orlando, Florida. Speaking on behalf of the applicant, we're here to address any questions that council may have.
My name's Steve Silvera with Forum Architecture in Altamont Springs. And this is a rendering of the proposed Park Place Phase Two mixed-use development. Go on the east side of Center Plaza Way.
Do you have a picture with the back of it's gonna look like? Front of it's pretty. Let's see the back.
Let me get that.
Thank you. Must have been in our packet, didn't even see it.
The elevation on the screen right now is the elevation that faces the lake. And we just have a work in progress for the parking lot side of the building. Now, for colors, I mean, the elevation has been developed, so it's colors and materials at this point.
Okay, so what's by your right hand is facing Mitchell Hammock?
No. Elevation here is facing east.
Okay.
So, I don't have an elevation right now in color of what faces Mitchell Hammock.
Right, but that is the back of the building that's facing the apartments on the other side?
No, this is the back of the building facing Oviedo Boulevard.
I understand the front of that building is facing the other apartments.
Yes, yes.
Okay, that's what I meant. All right, can I see that again? All right, so that is certainly a work in progress. What are your intentions for it?
I'm sorry?
What are your intentions for it?
Well, we have to, this is the elevation that we've developed for that, for the east elevation, where it's materials and colors now that we have to coordinate on this elevation. Like this, we have units here. These are apartment units.
The two, the two top floors.
Correct, correct. And then it's retail below. And then this is an open breezeway for access to the apartment units that face Center Plaza Way. And these are stair towers. This is a stair tower here.
Is that an elevator in there too?
There is an elevator on the other side of that, yes.
Okay. And then that's gonna be a breezeway where the brick is going through?
This is all breezeway here.
No, I meant on the ground floor.
The ground floor, these are door, service doors to the back of the retail spaces on the first floor.
And the area that looks like it's in bread where the tower is, that's gonna go through to Centerway?
This is gonna go through to, yes.
Anybody have any other questions? Work in progress, Tom? Okay. I'll take your word on that. I know you don't want to build anything that's unattractive. You guys have anything else to present or is that everything? All righty, I have no request-to-speak forms on this item. What is the pleasure of council?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Hicken?
Make a motion to adopt 2926-14.
Second. Motion's second. Councilman Hicken?
Tom, now I'll give you the accolades, because I had them too and I was a little confused, but you're still, it's your deal. But this is, this kind of excites me, because this is like the first one where I envision, you know, the residents upstairs, the retail, that's just kind of the building that we all envisioned. So, this is the first one and I saw a restaurant that gets everybody excited. So, you know, good job and just keep going.
Great. Anything else, sir?
No, sir.
Deputy Mayor, you got the floor.
Looks good, you know, I just, based on the other color, a little more contrast, the light on light. I know the picture matched, you know, you look at the pictures on the current building, but it just looks, I'm gonna say lighter, the contrast really doesn't show and it just, from the roadway, it just looks one color almost. It kind of, the light on light blends into each other. So, if you can bring up some more contrast, I was looking today. I was upstairs today, they just had, you know, we're showing this, whether it's brick up top, something, just give it a little more depth and contrast up on that second story. Because it just, you know, I see the white where the balconies are and stuff. It looked good, but I, you know, it looked, the other picture looked great and then you just looked at the application and it just, whether it's sunlight and, you know, it just doesn't look as great as the picture does. But it matches perfectly. I don't mean to say that it's done anything different. I just want to, you know, if you get a little more contrast and that'd be the only thing to say somehow, in materials or some other things. And it seems like this one has a little more than the original, too.
It does. We're not 100% sure.
Tom, I'm sorry, can you, just, my, Barbara just needs it for the record.
You're not 100% sure that the line green's gonna work there. This is gonna be one of these things that we're 80% sure on everything and we're just gonna have to put some paint up there. But I am very much in tune with getting a more bolder contrast. If you look at some of my other projects I've built throughout the state, I mean, they're exactly what you're describing. You know, I kind of inherited the color scheme from Phase One, so, you know, we jazz them if we can. It's gonna be interesting to see, you know, we'll try to match a couple of colors on Panera, because I think they have a little bit of pop. So, you know, working with Steve's group and interior designers, we're gonna put some colors in there to pop a little bit. You know, right now, it's just tough, you know, as nice as I can make this, I can't, it doesn't substitute for what happens in the field. So, but I am, I am...
And you can't deviate too much from across your eye. And I understand that exactly. You can't suddenly make a contrastful difference from what's sitting across the street.
Exactly, slowly, you know, across, but we are well aware of that and we'll...
I know you've heard it before, I just...
Yeah, and we'll spend some time. I mean, if I had a couple hundred grand, I'd throw some accent on. some accent on the, on the buildings next door, but, no, we're well aware of that, and we'll take care of it for you.
I think you can handle that.
That. Matter of money.
It looks good. It looks great, the bottom looks great, and I love, again, the idea of the retail on the bottom.
Leave that up.
Thanks, I'm good.
You're good?
Orient me with this, this rendering. Is that facing the apartments?
You were standing basically in the middle of the...
The memorial.
That's where we're posing, and the edge would be on that corner. So it would be opposite, Mitchell Hammock would be all the way down the street. This would, yeah. That elevation is after you were standing right there in the corner.
Looking down there?
Back corner, right there.
Alright.
You're standing in the memorial.
Yes, exactly.
If you're standing in the memorial, look out, that's where you are right now from that view.
And that elevation on that corner is almost identical to the one on the other corner. Because in theory, those two corners should mirror each other, so that maybe...
So that, that intersection's going to be brick paved like that?
No, no, don't think too much about that. We couldn't get everything on there.
I think that intersection is brick paved, isn't it?
It is, yeah, it is. That, that whole, that, that T-intersection there's all brick pavers and all...
It looked like a roundabout, that's why it was worth the damn roundabout then.
No, actually, the, the big round circle you see there's actually where the veteran memorial's going to go.
Okay.
The signs, the big sign.
Yeah, Jimmy Buffett's stage.
Right, and probably not the right form to speak about, but now's a good time to go out there and look.
I did.
We have comments, bring them to me. We're starting to put paint colors up there, so, you know, give me the feedback, go out there, take a look at it, just walk in.
It's starting to look nice.
It is starting to look nice, and...
We, we did get an award for it today.
That's right. You got the award.
Not me. It's a lot more work to do. We're looking at finishing up probably in March, you know, dotting I's, crossing T's in, in March. And a lot of the, what I call nice cities are starting to happen, because we get the hard structures up, and a lot of the hardscaping, softscaping, landscaping, freestanding monuments and structures, they're all starting to go up now, so that, you'll, you'll see in the next couple of months, plus or minus a couple of weeks with Christmas holidays, you know, the, the vision, the look, what's, what's going there. And walk the amphitheater, too. The amphitheater inside looks, looks very, very nice.
The ceiling looks good.
Does it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, I'll get your opinion, because I made the decision, we're going to keep it natural, if you don't mind.
I, I thought it looked nice.
Yeah, it looked really nice.
But, you know, but whatever you guys decide, the other, you know, you've got a design team, you know, they do this.
Originally, we were going to paint it, and we're just going to leave it natural. Right now, we have a little sealer up there and bring out the beauty of it a little bit. You know, when I first looked at that and the paint that they had up, I said, you can't paint this ceiling, it's too nice.
Tom, in front of the restaurant structure, isn't there like a little, I, I guess maybe just on the rendering, it's not shown here, isn't there like a little brick round plaza there or something?
Yeah, yeah, yes, there is, right there.
We're not removing it or anything, it's just not shown in the rendering.
You know, the instructions I gave my architect was just do the building. We didn't, we didn't have the time, the energy, or the money to put all, you know, the...
No, it's fine.
The infrastructure that's out there, so you kind of got to vision the infrastructure that's there. There's a little fountain to the right, there's the big half-circle that has the cut tile medallion of the beauty bar in the middle of it, so lots of animation coming in and out.
I, I ran into some of your residents at church on Sunday. Did you? Park Place. Good. And they are just thrilled that you opened everything up now, and...
We are officially open, and I encourage you, if you haven't been by there, stop by, say hello to the staff, and, and get the dog and pony show.
You got the televisions all fixed up in the television room there?
Yeah, everything is, best of my knowledge, is working.
So I, we can come watch football there on Sundays?
You can certainly do that. I'm always tweaking little things when I walk out there. Every time I go, it's like, okay, we need to add something here, we got to move that.
The beer taps are in?
Not yet, but that's, that's what the retail center have there.
Well, thank you, Tom. Anybody have any other questions?
You're good?
I'm good.
Thank you, Tom.
You're good?
My pleasure.
Do you have anything to add for us? About, no?
No, I don't. We're just chugging along, trying to get one project done before we go to the next one, and then go ahead and figure out something else to do.
We'll find more for you. Thank you, Tom.
You're quite welcome. If you have any questions, you can start there.
Thanks, Tom.
Alrighty, now, we had a motion, correct?
Yes.
Alrighty, motion on table was to adopt, I believe, correct?
Yes.
Alrighty, all in favor of the motion to adopt Resolution 2926-14? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alrighty, item number 20, changeable copy wall signs. Mr. Cobb, this is your item, I believe.
Yes, Mayor, thank you.
Yours and maybe Dr. Carreras'.
Yes. Tonight, we're asking for your direction. Currently in our land development code, we allow changeable copy signs, and what it states is, is that changeable copy signs will be a maximum of 20% of the total permitted sign area to be used. So, we don't, doesn't, we don't specify that whether it has to be associated with a freestanding sign, or it has to be associated with a wall sign. Could, actually, you could achieve both. The practice in Oviedo historically has been that the changeable copy signs have been placed with the freestanding ground signs. We recently issued a permit, and, and the sign was installed for a changeable copy wall sign. We provided copied pictures of the wall sign in your packet. Tonight, we're here to ask if you wish for us to continue the prac, allowing these changeable copy wall signs, or if you would like us to amend the land development code to possibly specify that changeable copy can only be used with a freestanding sign. When discussions with Mr. Groot, one of the things that, if we want to achieve what's known as zoning in progress, pending ordinance, zoning in progress doctrine, pending ordinance, we need for you to give us direction to go change the land development code. If you give us the direction to change the code, then we can, if someone comes in and asks, requests a permit, we can tell them no, that's not allowed, because you've given us the direction. So tonight, we would like to know, one, would you, is it okay to continue with the code as written, that you could do a changeable copy sign as a freestanding sign or on a wall? Or would you like us to change the code to do something different? We gave you an example in your staff report that we could add in the changeable copy section, we could say that a maximum 20% of the total permitted sign area of a freestanding sign may be used for a changeable copy sign. We could do that, that is one of the options that could be done. We wanted to give you an example. But we're just looking for direction tonight. If you'd like us to pursue this amendment, we can. If you're comfortable with the way the code is written, then that's, then we would ask to give that direction as well.
Brian, what's this staff expressed concern? Can you reveal that?
The concern is, is with our shopping centers and our multiple tenant buildings. If you look in the picture that we provided for you, you'll see that this is the only one on the building, but if you can imagine, this is a six or eight-unit building, and six or eight of those signs on the wall. One of the examples that we talked about as staff is over here at Althea Square. There's 30 to 40 units in Althea Square, and if you can imagine multiple, the, you know, 30 to 40 changeable copy signs along the building, along with the static, the static signs as well. And that, that's the concern that we had, is that it's, we don't know if that's really in keeping with the architectural goals that city council has set. And it was primarily the multiple tenant buildings that we were concerned with.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. What does council say?
Change it to the example, freestanding only.
Okay.
Councilwoman?
I, I can't really say, I don't have a picture of it. You said it's in the pack, and...
Yes, Ma'am. Yes, we provided a picture in your packet. You can see here.
It's not in our thing, actually.
It wasn't?
I saw it online, but it's not in the iPad.
Oh, it was supposed to be, I apologize. It was supposed to be there. There's also a close, do you have the other picture that you can pull up to?
Okay, there you go.
This is, this is the close-up picture right here.
I see.
And what they did is they just took an LED box and screwed it on the wall.
And this is the, this is the close-up of the, of it, and then, this was attachment one, which is a close-up of the building, and then, Len, if you can flip over to the other picture.
And, and the silly thing about it is you can't even read it. I mean, it just, all it does is blink red.
This is standing from the road, and so if you can imagine, there's, there's roughly 10 units in this building, what if each unit had one of those signs?
No one would read them. Does that, does that read our code? Is that 20% or less?
Yes, sir. It met code, it received a permit.
Okay. I don't know who would want to do that.
Well, I'm with Councilman, excuse me, Deputy Mayor Schenck on this one.
I am, too.
From our left?
I, I'm neutral, I don't care less. Go, go forth.
You know, I always lose the sign thing. I like the sign, I wouldn't care, you know, when you go to Vegas, there's a million of them, you know? So, for me, I think you all play too much with signs, and I've expressed that through the years, I mean, that sign, you know, I've seen it, you know, you may not, you may not look at it.
I mean, I see all your points, you know, it could get...
Perhaps if there's eight of them.
I'm saying, it could get kind of busy, but you know what? You know, I, I just think that we pay too much attention to signs, and I'm okay with his sign, and, you know, if they put one on everyone, you know, they're all trying to make a living, and I think, but when we, when we make these kind of things, it just makes it harder, you know? We get mad when stores are not open, you know, somebody does pay attention to that, you know? I look at signs, you know? I think our signs six foot off the ground all over the place, that's another story, should be higher, but, you know, I'm okay with losing this one.
Four to one, Mr. Cobb, you have your direction. Okay, Mr. Mayor.
He's neutral, he doesn't care. He said I'm neutral, he didn't make an opinion.
Mr. Mayor, in order to, to have the doctrine implicated, we need to have an actual action, which would be a motion and vote.
Make, well, he asked for direction, he wants a motion to change...
Why don't you just make the motion, and we'll move it?
The motion would be to proceed with the drafting and processing of the amendment as proposed by Mr. Cobb.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion?
If we would give this direction, we would still vote on it when it comes back to us.
Oh, absolutely.
Yes, sir, it will have to go through the full land development code amendment process. What this does is that it gives us the ability to, to tell folks, those who come in later and ask for a permit, we can tell them no, that's not allowed.
If you didn't enact it, it would give staff the ability to delay the issuance of permits. If you did enact it later on, it would just, you would continue the, the denial, so...
That business have to be in that he was approved under the current code, because he leave his sign up?
Oh, yes.
Yes, he can keep it.
He's grandfathered, yes, sir.
What happens when you pass this, and other guy comes up, say, wait, I want one, too?
Then you would say you're not going to issue the permit until, and then if you don't pass the ordinance, the permit, the order, the permit would be issued, but if you do pass the ordinance, it would continue not to be issued.
Oh, boy.
Okay. Well, you know, well, I, I, I'll just leave it alone, but quite frankly, it never should have been approved. You know, we, we never discussed putting these things up on walls, all of our, all of our conversations, as Councilman Hankin just said, I mean, ad nauseam over these things, have been, out on the monument signs, but whatever, it's done, now we've got to fix it, again, so, anyway. The motion's on the table, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? One, four to one, that sounded like. Anything else, Mr. Cobb?
No, sir.
Alrighty. Mr. Cobb, your report.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of weeks ago, I sent out an email to you all. The Seminole County Legislative Delegation is having their meeting this Friday, I believe it's from 9:00 to 1:00 in the county commission chambers, and they asked if we were going to have a representative come and present to them. We have to let them know by Wednesday, and the mayor notified me that he isn't able to attend, so I was at, wanting to see if any of you all are able to attend and present on behalf of the city. If you're not, I do have a suggestion for you. Tonight, you approved your work program for Gray Robinson for this year. This is part of their work program, is discussing city items before our legislative delegation. You could instruct them to go on your behalf as well, but I wanted to, I needed to hear from you all, so that I know what to tell the county by Wednesday.
Can anybody attend? They'd like to just see one of us there, it'll only be for an hour? I've done it before. I'm just unable to do it Friday.
I believe so, but... What's, uh...
Nine to one.
9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Don't they pencil us in, though, for an hour slot?
Yeah, it's up front. You know, the city stuff comes up front, and you can either address them, you don't necessarily have to address them, you can give them a little handout, you know how that goes. You've done it.
Isn't that our dare?
Right.
I'm going to dare. Sorry. Going to dare that morning.
Would you prefer to have Gray Robinson represent the city?
Councilmember from staff?
I can't.
Keith, can you go by any chance?
I don't think so.
No?
You know, if we can get pushed by, if we push it after the dare, oh, you know, we'll go right after the dare.
Yeah, no, they have us all up front. Remember, you know, they usually do the cities up front, and, well, it's usually the colleges, then the cities, and then they go into all the not-for-profits and all that.
You know, I just, 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 just for conversation.
Shouldn't be there.
We can call them if you want to call them.
Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll see, and I'll let you know tomorrow.
We'll make a quick phone call to one of our representatives, Brian. We'll let Deputy Mayor take care of it.
You, you wanted to bring up conversation?
No, no, I'm good. That's, that's better than what I was going to suggest, that's fine.
Who are you going to suggest? We all flip coins?
No. I was going to say, I mean, I don't mind saying, I mean, you know, I think Chris Carmody is, his relationship, and I think city manager had a great, great idea. I mean, Chris has the relationship with these guys, too, so if we're all unavailable...
He'll probably be there anyways.
He's very, yeah, he's very effective. I'm comfortable with Chris handling that, or Robert, anyone.
Alright, so Deputy Mayor will get back to you tomorrow, and if not, Mr. Carmody will handle it for us. Like I said, he'll be there anyway.
I will contact Mr. Carmody and make sure he's teed up and ready to go.
Anything else, Mr. Cobb?
That's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Mr. Groot?
Nothing to say, Mr. Mayor.
Look at you. Councilmember Britton?
Uh, I don't have much, I just, to let you know, I'll put this in the, the office. Attended the Legisity's Transportation Committee meeting last Friday, and they adopted two, And they adopted two, two recommended advocacy issues. And I'll just leave that for you guys for you. Big issues. Mostly Uber and ride sharing issues that really don't affect us much.
Terrific. Anything else? All righty. I've got a, I got a bunch of things. Chief, uh, Chief White threw a whole bunch of things here for me to announce. But let me start with some business first. We all met with the Development Services staff, and they put together an action plan for implementation of some changes in the department, which I know all of us took to very well, and we're very excited to see them. I had been doing some thinking ever since Deputy Mayor Schenck brought up a possible work session with the actual folks who use the system about, you know, how perhaps maybe before you go forth and implement, we need some feedback. And what I'd like to suggest to the council is that I would like to put together a Business Advisory Committee with all the folks who use the code. All the folks who are touched by Development Services, all the folks who are touched by all the departments that do reviews. Get them all together here. We'll, we'll do it ninety days or so. We've already, plenty of time. We've got the holidays coming up. And just get some feedback from them. Have John Jones, I spoke with him briefly. We were all together, Mr. Cobb, Mr. Jones, and myself at Leadership Seminole Vision Five on Friday. And I threw this past him. He evidently had done it for us once before, which I had completely forgotten about. But I think it was done via mail. You know, just give us your feedback rather than a meeting. So what John, Mr. Jones had proposed was we'd have a first meeting with all the stakeholders and just get some feedback. And, you know, he wanted, if I, council is okay with it, I'd like to be able to be there and champion this. Get some feedback from everybody. Put it into a staff report, provide it to staff. And then perhaps thirty or forty-five days later, we'll get together with the group again and the staff. And then the staff can identify all the different issues that they see. And we'll get the staff, everybody who touches a project. So Teresa, that's going to be your whole team. Going to have to come. Fire Chief Sharon will have to be there. Bobby, somebody from your department. We'll just, anybody who touches it will be here with the group. And if this is too big to hold the group, we'll find a venue where we can hold it. And just really craft and make sure, like we did with Ion, like what Keith did with Ion and what Brian, and really Brian said something as we were talking about this that really made me think even more about it. With Ion, the initial push with it, we all felt what they, we knew what they wanted. And then when we actually started to meet with them, it was all different. Or not all different, but slightly different, you know, what was important to them. So I think before you go forth and start heading down the path, let's just make sure that somebody doesn't have a better idea. So if it's okay with council, I'd like to start working with that. It won't take up any of your time. I'll take care of the whole thing. Yes, sir. Good? Keith? All right. I appreciate that. I'll coordinate with Mr. Cobb and Teresa and Mr. Jones. On our dais this evening was left from Robin, the newsletter, Oviedo in the News, which is formerly the Friday Letter. And I think staff has sent out a couple of these. These are very nice, by the way. Much nicer. And I think the request here, guys, is they want to share it out with the public once it comes to us. So the Friday, it'll come to us. And then the Monday, according to this, you want to post it on all the social media. And then you also want to post it, send it out via the e-blast as well, correct? Is that the request, Robin?
That is correct, Mayor. But the big request is, is that we want to go from weekly to the second and fourth Friday of each month. That's the big request.
Biweekly, essentially.
Yes, sir.
Does council have a problem with that?
No. Just make sure to schedule, like, you know, the events and scheduling, especially parks and rec stuff is far enough out that people know. You know, sometimes there's an event on the Fri, it was just, you'd notice on the Friday letter, they may be that Friday or the next day.
Yeah, I mean, the last newsletter we nailed out had an event that had already passed.
Take place, yeah. So just, that's all I would say is, you know, people then probably start really looking at that because it is really nice. I love the format change, et cetera. It'll really get a lot of traction. So make sure we got that.
You know, the Friday Letter used to be to keep us informed of some of the, the day-to-day nuts and bolts stuff that were going on in case we got asked. And I don't mind doing what you're asking to do with the newsletter. But I, I'm still looking for a venue to get, get that inside information that, you know, what's going on in this street corner? What are those trucks doing out there? That we can go answer those questions. So we need to go and readdress that.
Okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
We used to get the, a listing of all the permit applications, building permits and whatnot, and the status of all those. And that kind of all fell by the wayside. It might have been too much information, but it's, it was good information to have.
Can we compile that up on what used to be known as the, formerly known as the Chicken I mean, it might be easier just to email to us. I, I don't know.
Well, an alternative is, is if, if you're okay, Brian, if we get a question, can we zip, you know, I usually just give you a call or send you an email and say, hey, this just came up. Can we get a quick response on that? So that's, that's the way I've been doing it lately.
You're talking more like internal stuff.
Yeah.
You can also place things on the page of the department of its Development Services. We can place those out there monthly. We can work with Development Services and according to the schedule, put that out there as soon as it's available. This just made it very simple and easy, something we can send to the citizens to provide them another bit of information.
Okay.
Miss Bigelow did a wonderful job.
Don't not do it on my account. And I will say that both chiefs do a great job. If there's some media interest or something going on where the media is floating around in a helicopter, we get that information.
Chief Chetna is on Facebook now. Can you imagine that?
You're kidding me?
No.
You fool. Haven't you watched the mayor?
I encouraged him.
Good luck with that one, chief. No.
I was tired of getting asked about darn helicopters.
Mayor, to answer your question, yes, you will get it first. And then we'll send it out to the others.
Yeah, and I think that's, that's great, you know, because we never know when someone's going to pick up a phone and give us a call and ask you that stuff. And it's good to have it handy, so.
So why don't we consider this a work in progress to address the concerns of, I thought I heard Councilwoman agree with Councilman Britton.
Yes, I do.
You did, right? So that some of the behind-the-scenes stuff, you know, whether we do it in a monthly email out to the council, whether you do it as a folder up on that formerly known as the Chicken Coop, whatever it's called now.
Right.
You know, in our folder.
In your council folder. We know that.
Yeah, well, you've got all the, everybody has access to that, right? Off the iPads? It's off the iPad, but...
As well as the website. You can get to it from the website, choosing City Council. So we can, we can post something that just says, you know, news. Call it the same title as this, basically, in some respects. And you can go there and, you know, look at anything. But we can also put the Development Services schedules out there or any other schedules that would not be part of the normal biweekly process.
It is a lot, you know, I don't, I don't, any information, and it's good. Like on a monthly, just put it as a monthly basis or, you know, whatever. Jump up the status because in a paper format, you know, they did use to send it sometimes. You'd be like pounding through. And Bobby used to put up some stuff, you know, for us to...
Yeah, we did, we did. Yeah, I don't think Councilman Britton wants that. Councilman Britton likes briefs.
Yeah.
Well, he was, like you said, like the permitting one.
Brevity is appreciated.
The permitting one that showed all the permits and the status, et cetera.
I think the last time we put that was September. I think we put one out in September. We did try to put that out.
You've been putting them up.
We do.
They asked about that.
I'm thinking about a work session for Councilman Britton once a week, you know, get, update him on that stuff.
Yeah, that's all, that's all we need, more work sessions.
If I can make it, thank you, Ron. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was going to say, we can communicate with you over the next couple of weeks, the same way we have this last few Fridays, and work out something that works best for you as far as on the City Council page or on the individual department page.
And it may be educating us again what's out there and saying, are you using this?
I was just going to go there.
Is this meaningful information anymore? Should we continue doing this? That kind of thing may be there also.
Yeah, because add on that Chicken Coop, you know, the formerly known as, I mean, all the pre-app stuff is up there. So, I mean, that's a very informative tool of what Development Services is facing. And, I mean, you know, I, I won't be bashful, and I don't have any problem admitting this. I mean, a lot of times I'll see things come up, and I'll shoot an email to Teresa and Brian and just say, you know, what's this? You know?
Yeah, please deny.
Huh?
Please deny.
Yeah. I, I try to make them as nice as I can. I think I've gotten slightly better.
Say please.
A lot of times it's, a lot of times it's brevity. I'm on my phone. I'm just trying to get right to the point. But, okay, Robin, anybody have any of the... Rob? All righty.
One thing, if I may say, this will also be posted on the website. So it will be a link when it's in Facebook and Twitter. It's a link to the website. So again, trying to encourage our citizens to use the website and, you know, eventually build it up to what we like for it to be.
You know what they, the citizens don't know that's there? And I tell them about it on Facebook all the time, is the Citizens Request button. Nobody realizes that that's there. A lot of times I get asked questions about a sidewalk, a street light, or this, that. I just, I've been pointing them there rather than me pasting, copying, emailing. It's...
We'll put it in this week.
If I can get them over there.
Yeah, that's a good one.
I mean, a lot of times I get, you know, I get tagged about everything on Facebook, and that's fine. You know, a lot of times I'll copy and paste it out to the staff. And I always copy Brian. And honestly, he knows what's going on. And then I usually get that response from Brian, you know, don't believe everything you read on Facebook. But if we can push them towards that button and keep pounding it in here, you know, maybe, maybe a little picture of the webpage, you know, an arrow, here's the button. Because now, my understanding of the way that works, and I think you've explained this to me, if they go there and they fill out the form correctly, if they register, then when they enter the problem, it goes to the right department.
That's correct.
And then they'll get a response.
That's correct. But you can't go without registering. You just don't receive a response back. But we did set it up both ways because we had some folks who said they preferred not to register themselves. So we set it up that way. But it is also set up if they register, once it's completed, a pothole or whatever it might be, they receive an email back that it's been completed.
Now, is it a series of like little drop-down menus so it goes to the right department? Does it go to a catch-all box and then somebody clears up?
No, it goes to the correct department based on what you select. There's a drop-down that says, okay, street signs or whatever it might be, potholes. And there's another. And you can fill, I mean, you can put in questions for budget. I mean, it's, it's a very broad-based selection.
Right, so the other goes to a catch box somewhere.
It does. And it goes to IT. They look at a first name. They receive emails as well as Ms. Bigelow receives an email. And then we send it out to the correct department. It may be Ms. Rodriguez, or it could be someone else in Public Works. They receive it and then they respond.
Wouldn't that be a great thing to even explain in here, that if you register, you'll get a response?
We'll do that. We'll even put that in, possibly in the voice article, if we have a little bit of space. Maybe put something in there about the citizen action.
For the four people who read it.
Okay. We can do that.
Any other questions for Robin? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Graffiti, let's talk about graffiti. Has anybody seen the Mystic Gas Station lately?
The what?
Mystic Gas Station.
434, Chapman.
Chapman and 434. I encourage everybody to go by and see what the artists of Oviedo have done to it. Staff has been on top of it, doing everything that they can in order to get the property owner to correct it. But it has been brought to our attention because of the amount of graffiti that is on the building, that our staff has no way, if the property owner is unwilling to fix it, of going in there and fixing it. Mr. Groot has, I guess, brought something forward to staff that he alerted me of this morning. And Lonnie, I'll lean on you, but I think it's a graffiti ordinance that you're working on with Sanford.
That's correct.
An abandoned building ordinance and a nuisance abatement ordinance.
Yes, sir. The latter two, our staff have been working with me for, for a while. The graffiti, I just brought that to everybody's attention because you raised the issue. But that would be a potential ordinance too, which actually does provide for remedying the, those types of nuisances and charging back the property owner.
Right, and currently, we cannot do that. At least according to what I saw in Sean's emails.
We don't have a code that allows it. That's correct.
Yeah, and this isn't just a little scribbling of graffiti. This building from the ground floor up over the windows, it's graffiti. I mean, it is artwork, I guess, as you call it. And then they, they also hit the wall on Chapman Oaks, I believe. They hit all the electrical boxes, the AT&amp;T boxes. This time, they didn't go up and down the streetlight poles like they did last time. But I think staff, Bobby, you might have sent somebody out to paint those. I know that was all taken care of. So, you know, I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention, that, you know, there, there is a solution to this. And I know staff's been working with them. And I guess eventually that's coming forth, or...
Yes, sir.
Terrific. Oviedo Police Foundation. Chief, you want to talk about your fundraiser real quick?
Mr. Mayor, thank you for bringing it up. On Thursday night at the Al House from 6:30 to 8:30 on the patio, the Al House has graciously allowed the Oviedo Police Foundation to hold the fundraiser. All the sales on the patio between 6:30 and 8:30, of those sales, ten percent goes to the police foundation.
Great.
So I'm encouraging everybody to come out and have dinner, maybe an adult beverage. Not too many, though, because we don't want anybody driving intoxicated.
And people can bring donations too and just donate if they'd like to.
They certainly can. Thank you for that, that suggestion, Deputy Mayor.
Do you have to mention that that's why you're there? Sometimes...
Uh, no, just anybody on the patio between those hours.
Okay, good.
I think if you're in the restaurant and you want it to count, you got to tell them.
You got to tell them.
But if you're on the patio, I believe what chief says is what's going to do. Well, thank you, chief. We will see you then.
Thank you.
Now, that Thursday is also Caesar over at Sign Works is, at his new building. It's his ribbon cutting. So, but that's at 5:30. So we'll cut the ribbon at six, and we should make it over in no problem, in no time. Great day in the country was a great day. Great job to all of you in the Women's Club. But I'll leave you to talk about that one. The Oviedo versus Sanford Food Drive. Happy to report that it ended up being Oviedo winning, but it got, it got called a draw. But the food banks won. And that's all that matters. They raised 25,000 pieces of food in a three-week time period for the Seminole County School Food Bank up in Sanford. Here in Oviedo, it went to Hope Foundation and all the local elementary school and high school food banks. So it was 12,800 pieces here in Oviedo and just a little bit less up in Sanford. So since it was called a draw, Mayor Triplet and I have both agreed to live up to our end of the wager. So you'll all be getting Evites in the very near future to come downtown and watch Mayor Triplet clean up after our chickens. And then you'll watch me serve him a fried chicken dinner at the Townhouse Restaurant, maybe in a Hooters outfit. We don't know yet. So I'm trying to get him to waive that requirement.
We won't be there. That's too much information.
Hey, you know, it was all for fun. It was all for the food drive.
Now we know why you're working out.
I wasn't going to go, but I am now.
Would you like to wear the Hooters outfit for me?
No way.
Are you sure?
Yes.
You might look a little better in it than it is. I think I'll let the chief do that. All right, last thing, just real quick, and, you know, it's that time of the year again, tons and tons and tons and tons of events. Chief White gave me this, and he just asked me to read them off real quick. We have, the City of Oviedo has their holiday food drive going on, and I know our December luncheon is bring, bring food to that, right? The holiday luncheon, that'll be fun. That's going on November 1st through December 31st. The collections are at every city facility, and the collection is to benefit the Forgotten Ones and Hope Downtown? Hope Helps? All right. The Historical Society on Tuesday, the 18th, that is tomorrow night, 7:00 PM, they're meeting at the Memorial Building, and they have a special guest presenter, Mr. John Nico, who happens to be the Director of Operations for Mead Botanical Garden. So I guess we're going to learn about Theodore Mead and Mead Manor here in Oviedo, all the different plants and orchids and things of that nature. That sounds like a lot of fun. The Hometown Community Tree Lighting, that one is 6th, I think. I don't have a date here. December 6th, right, chief? Saturday night, 5:30 PM to 8:00 PM over at the Lawton House. We have Parton Elementary Starshine coming out again. Santa Claus is coming at 6:00 PM to light the tree and hang out with the kids, just like we do every year. Is the Women's Club coming or Cookies?
We sure are.
Chief, we get that 100-foot tree this year, right? Brian, put that in the cookies next year. We get that.
Yes, sir.
So chief, is that a 100 minus 88? Let's see, the chief also has here, we have Santa around town, starting on Monday, December 8th, ending on Friday, December 12th. Tours begin each evening at 6:00 PM. They are up on the city's website, I did see it. I don't think any neighborhoods have changed any night, so your historical data, if Santa came through your neighborhood on a Monday, he'll be there on a Monday this year, correct? Okay, no problem. Not really going to change where we're going. And then we have Snow Mountain Event. Now, that's the parade and Snow Mountain. That is on Saturday, December 13th, over at the mall. You've got VIP passes, that starts at 3:30. The parade starts at 4:00 PM, and then Snow Mountain runs till 9:00, with regular admissions starting at 5:00. That parade is a blast. There are, there must be 50 or 60 participants in it, and we get to make a mess out of the mall with the confetti machines, so. Who shall we let control it this year? I say the council.
You double the confetti this year, Drew.
But we won't, we won't blow Zach's jacket out of it this year.
I know, yeah. That was cute.
When did we do that? Was that last year or the year before, when we took Zach's?
Two years ago.
Two years ago, we put his, his jacket over the top to try to create more vacuum, to blow more confetti. All of a sudden, somebody pulled the lever, and out the jacket went, got sucked right out and launched. So I wouldn't recommend doing that. And I'm sorry for going on so long, but that is the end of my report. Who's up next?
Mayor, could we add one more item to the list? Chief Chudnow has one thing to add.
Shop with a Cop. This weekend.
Well, Shop with a Cop is actually on the same day as Snow Mountain, on the 13th in the morning. However, this coming Saturday, we're going to have our silent auction to help fund Shop with a Cop in the food court at, at the mall from 10:00 to 3:00. We have numerous items up for silent auction, so I hope everybody comes out and bids a little bit.
Can I make a suggestion? I did get a call about that this morning.
Certainly.
That it wasn't anywhere. They couldn't find it. You know, it wasn't advertised anywhere. Can we, you know, whatever you do, tweet it, Facebook it, e-blast it?
It, it's been out on, it was on on Facebook all day today.
I saw it today.
Okay. All right, let's just keep.
But, but I can tweet it out and make sure it gets up on the website.
And the e-blast, I mean, we have about 1,200, 1,500 email addresses, right? Send it out. You know, maybe those people will take it and post it. Get it out there, chief. So this Saturday at the mall?
This Saturday at the mall from 10 until 3.
Can I bid for Councilman Britton like I did last year?
Certainly.
Excellent.
As long as it brings in more money to fund Shop with a Cop, that, that's just fine. I don't think, I don't think Councilman Britton.
He bought a dozen golf balls last year for about $100.
I did. I did.
And we do have a lot of golf, foursomes up, and we've got some more stuff coming in, so.
Excellent, chief, thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
We'll be out there to support you. End of my report, Deputy Mayor Schenk.
I know reporting.
Councilmember Hinkin. Yeah. I think so, too. Happy anniversary, by the way, 25 years.
Thank you, sir.
Should we bring Gina Meadows, or what should we get her?
No, bring me one. No, there was a, thank you, thank you so much. That was a good milestone, had a nice weekend in the Bahamas. Thank you very much. Chief Chudnow, I just want to say you're making this really hard on me. You know how I feel about social media? I was on it twice, I got off it, and then Lars went on it. I'm like, all right, this is really bad if Lars is on, you know? Now you're on it, you're making this really hard, you know? So I'll just leave it at that. Do you really have a page?
I don't have a page, no. I'm just.
That's information.
Oh, okay, so it's not your real, like.
No, it's not my page.
Okay, I'm still off the hook. When that happens, I might have to sign up again.